Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
It is five past six o'clock on Thursday, December 9th, 2021. This is a meeting of the joint meeting of the Wind of Northeast Unified Elementary School District and the Westminster School District in its embryonic form. And I'm calling the meeting to order. One thing we should always do on the 1A when we have meetings where they're remote is do a roundtable of who's here, not just to embarrass those who aren't, but just so if anybody does see this in fact, I hope then maybe it'll blame for the comments. So can we start in-house here, starting to my left? Rick, you want to lead off the introductions?
Sure. My name is Ricky Adams. I'm our district's technology director.
Liz Hardy, Principal Westminster Center School.
Andy House, Center on Supercentive.
David Major, Westminster School Board.
I'm Jack Brier. I'm chair of this of the W N U E S D and a representative from Corrapsus.
I'm Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster School Board.
Ginger Majowski, I'm a representative from Athens through the School Board of Raphan Happen.
Lynn Morgan, representative from Athens for the Athrap School.
Charlie Hudson, Westminster School Board.
All right, now I'm going to call up as people I see. As if people are missing, please let me know, starting with you, Melissa.
I'm Melissa Carlstrom, and I am on the unified board from Westminster.
Angie.
Hi, Angela Cardi. I am the principal at Grafton Elementary School.
And I see Nicole is here and presumably in the position of recorder of minutes. And I see Ms. Wilber is here as well. You could say hi, right?
Hi, I'm Desi Wilber. I am Grafton Elementary School Nurse.
Wow, timely thing.
Yay, and thank you.
Is there anybody else on the, is anybody else on? Okay, well with that, let me ask about adjustments to the agenda.
I do have one.
Yes.
Which is a proposal for early release days for the remainder of this school year.
All right, so that would be, is that something as an action item?
Uh, yes.
All right, so we will put that as a 6B. And we, if you need to do it earlier rather than later, we can.
Sure.
All right, so 6B is that. I want to add just briefly, and we may not use this, but to have a new 7, and it would be an executive session, just liability issue.
Yep.
And just want to just touch on that.
I suppose as that, we, I don't know if you want to move that budget discussion potentially, or?
Well, that's a great question.
I will do what I can.
Well, would you, do you think we should do that as a new 5 and just shift everything down, or how do you want to, what was your thought there?
I would, yes, I guess so.
Okay, then that's what it is. So for those scoring at home, we have a new 5, which is personnel liability. It may be a brief executive session because of the fact it would threaten the interests of the district. Then we will make our current 5 new 6, the current 6 new 7, current 8 the new 9, and accordingly. So hopefully everybody's got that and can do it on a piece of paper because I brought mine on my way back. So why don't we start with those adjustments being agreed to without objection? All righty. Communication and public comment. Do we have anyone that would like to speak that is not here on official business? Ms. Wilber, are you here on official business? Are you here just as an observer to find out what crazy things we do?
Just as an observer.
All right.
Usually here.
I've noticed that. I'm actually quite impressed by that, by the way. All right, so we're on to number four, or now, still four?
Still four.
Yes. Principal report. So who wants to start the process?
Yeah, I'll start, just speaking about enrollment, and then Angela, you can share your proportions for Grafton. So currently Westminster has 157 students, one VTVLC student. We had two, one just recently returned last week. We have four students who are homeschooling for this year.
At Grafton, we have 44 students, three VTVLC students, and five students that are homeschooling this year. And I'm very happy to report that two students who are currently with VTVLC are planning to return in January. It's very exciting news.
We currently have 18 confirmed COVID cases for the year. And we offer surveillance testing each Tuesday. So currently we have 130 students and staff who test each week. We offer surveillance testing for students and staff also who are unable to be in the building that day. So if they're quarantining at home or into the building, they can just come on Tuesday between 10:30 and 11:30 to get their surveillance testing, drive-up style.
At Grafton Elementary, we have 14 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the school year. We also offer surveillance testing each Tuesday, and we currently have 51 students and staff who test each week. Surveillance testing for students and staff who are unable to be in the building is also offered on a drive-up basis, usually between, you know, the start of school at 8:00 and noon when our box gets shipped out. Liz, I'll keep going. Test to stay is up and running. We've been able to sign up at Westminster. There's 109 students that are signed up, and at Grafton, there are 39 students. This has been really successful. Students who start arriving at 7:45 are quickly back in class. At Westminster, they use the gym and space out the desks for students that sit and eat their breakfast while they wait for their test to process. And at Grafton, bus students come into the gym, they get tested, and then they wait at the cafeteria tables for their test to process. And then students who are brought to school remain in their car, and they're tested and then stay in the car with their parents until their test process, and then they're welcomed back into the building.
As you probably know, we had our farm and field days at each of the schools before Thanksgiving break, both, or before.
It was October.
Halloween. Yeah, it seems forever ago that Angela and I really gave a principal award. So it was a fun-filled outdoor day. Mandy, who works at both schools, worked with teams in each building to create stations for our school where classes participated in everything from scarecrow making to pumpkin painting. Westminster had a cinder kitchen to cook chicken tacos outside. And in Grafton, Mandy made a fantastic pumpkin soup using pumpkins that were made, grown from the garden.
And we had that wonderful name, The Plow, that Westminster and Grafton did along with the Vermont Department of Transportation. And at, so the students submitted names, and there was a drawing, and Westminster's winner, and their name is Green Mountain Plower, and Grafton named their snowplow Snow Panther. And The Plow visited both schools on November 19th. It was lots of fun.
And just to mention on the farm and field day, the funds we were, this is part of our farm and school grant that funded the materials for the, for that day. And Angela and I just wanted to give a shout out to our staff. They just, teachers just continue to be so unbelievably flexible and accommodating professionals that are committed to our curriculum goals while meeting the needs of students either remote or in person. This year has given so, so many challenges, but the work that the staff is doing within the building on a daily basis is so very impressive, and we just wanted to vocalize that to the board.
And that's it? Any questions?
When we go around, raise your hand here if you're in-house. Anybody? Yes, there we go.
I was just going to comment that the coverage on the farm and field day was outstanding. And did Mandy write that article and send it around?
No, it was somebody from Food Connects.
Oh, okay.
Who works with our grant, who came that day.
Uh huh.
Yeah, so we were lucky that she was interested because we've been working with her since the grant started. We've been working with Food Connects, and so they knew this was part of our plan and part of our, an event through our grant. So they came to check out the day, so they were in there all morning.
Well, it was an excellent article, and it was in the Commons, and there were four in.
That's the Gazette, too.
The Gazette and in the Shopper.
Yeah.
And of course, I did notice that it was my grandson, and a photo of him pointing the kale, but beyond that. It was just such nice coverage and so good for the community to be able to see and help celebrate how wonderful that was. So congratulations to everybody. It's just really, really outstanding. And to reemphasize what you said, and I know Angela is saying the same thing, but more celebration of, I'll start with the nurses for a minute, and all of the staff, and certainly the teachers for just this continuing conviction and grace as they, you know, really serve the children and the community. Thanks to everybody.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to reiterate that, and you guys in the schools trying to deal with all those administrators, staff, thank you to all of you. Yeah. Ditto.
Charlie?
It was wonderful to have that front page thing, but coincidentally, I have noticed there's almost never anything about Westminster schools in the Gazette. So I spoke to Liz, and we spoke between us, we wrote up a short article, which is going to be news from, with the schools, because they have news from the garage and news from any except the school.
Yeah, so Charlie and I teamed up, so I'm really excited about that, Charlie.
Yeah, and so we want to do it once a month, and I think particularly with all this, with all these decisions about spending this money and whatever else we do, so the idea is to feed the meal, Liz, so we can make sure we get the school in the body of diet every month.
As a point of information, we were doing that when the two schools were unified, and I, you know, felt a little weird about doing it during the, since we've had the formal separation, but you're right, it's been a gap. The Grafton news and when either I or more often than you remember us to do it, we get a piece each other to the opinion, but it's a gap, and one I really, it's a miss, and I'm glad you guys are filling up.
Ironically, the embarrassment of riches is kind of.
No, you know, people are more invested in their kids than they are almost anything else, including people who are, what we'll call parents by proxy. So I think it's a wonderful thing.
Well, thanks to you, Lou. And I knew you guys would pick it up, too.
The, I have a kind of question relative to both the vaccination clinic and a question that came up from a parent. So I'd just like to know how the vaccination clinic went? And it's a follow-up about the test to stay thing that came from a parent that really should have asked you guys, but I think that's me.
Sure, so our clinic, our vaccination clinic is scheduled for January.
Right.
So Angela, well, you can talk about how it went for you.
Yeah, our, the vaccination clinic was very smooth. The Department of Health came on those two days, right between like 8:00 and 8:15, all of their personnel started to show up, and we were doing tests to stay in the same space. So they just sort of worked around us. They needed tables and chairs and different things, and they just quickly moved those things around. Parents came in the cafeteria door. Gym and cafeteria are the same thing, so I sort of use those words interchangeably, but they came into that door, and then they could go out the other door sort of by the main entrance. And so you signed up on, you sort of checked in on one side, waited on one side, got your vaccine sort of in the middle behind a curtain, and then moved over to a little waiting area, and we had a movie playing. And, you know, parents, parents did come with their kids, even our, a lot of our students who we had in the building, their parents came at their vaccination time, and Nurse Desi went and got those students from the classroom, came and brought them in, and then after their 15 minutes after they got their vaccine, they could go back to class. But there were a lot of people who came that were not from our school, so, but it was great to see them too and chat with them as well. The first day that they came, Nurse Desi and I were like around a lot, just sort of like, we got to make sure this goes okay. And then the second time that they came, it was like, all right, that was okay, we can sort of stay away a little bit more, but I thought it was a great experience.
Excellent.
I just have a question for Angela, because I haven't had a chance to touch base with her on it. So at one of our other schools where they did, the clinic, they did offer some booster doses and maybe some first round shots. Were they able to do the same thing there?
Yes, yes, it was offered, but we didn't advertise that. Desi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I only became aware that they would do those boosters or do those additional vaccines when they arrived last week, like that morning. And I don't, I don't think that anybody did come, and I know that, I think all of our staff had already checked those boxes with their vaccine, so they didn't need to utilize that.
Yeah, and one of our other buildings, staff were able to, and they actually went out and put a sign out, and they had a couple walk-ins.
Well, that came up when we, when the, when the Department of Health did the information session, and the question, and the question was asked, I asked it, about, about, about those, about boosters, because I had a number of people ask me if that was included, and I told them no at the time, because that was my understanding. It would be useful to know if in the future, this January session, what the status is going to be.
So we're trying to find out, and that's, that's why I was asking, because, because we were unaware of it as well at the other school, and it was just something that they kind of put out, because they originally had said, nope, kids only, and I think it was said it originally was just the kids from that building, and then it got figured out. We have since Rebecca Stockwell, our float nurse, has reached out to the Department of Health to see if, we've gotten quite a few queries about just having a booster clinic.
Right.
And would we be, could we host a booster clinic somewhere in our, within our SU? And so, you know, for teachers, or maybe even, you know, you know, folks in the community. So we're trying to actively do that and see if we can help out in that way, too, so.
Let me know, because you might have, might have half of Grafton to show, because apparently boosters have been very hard to schedule.
Yeah, that's what I've heard.
Thank you. What was, this, again, Angela and Liz, a really positive report in a lot of ways. I want to ask about a couple of things that are harder, and one of those is to characterize again what's going on with children socially and emotionally in the school, and maybe even a broader question about the relationship with parents. I've heard from some people, you know, it's just so hard not to be able to go into the building. It's so hard in some ways to feel distant. So if you could just characterize that a little bit and help us, you know, I know it's not your rules that are keeping the parents out, so just talk about that a little bit and how you're feeling about it and what you're seeing.
Yeah, so as far as social, emotional, the students in the building, we have our tier one instruction, which is the second step, which is through our school counselor. So she's in every classroom on a rotating basis. She also pulls small groups as needed, as necessary. So she kind of works with all students. We also have our clinician, David Bingham, who works with specific students on treatment plans, and that is open to any student who needs it, but it's very specific need basis, and, you know, there's an intake process with that, where Carla, our school counselor, is just really for everyone. All elementary school teachers also have been working with responsive classroom, which is just a professional development on creating classroom communities, and how to create engaging academics, and how to build relationships with students, and how that impacts student learning. We also have Carrie Newton, who's in the district of sort of practices, and she can come into specific classrooms and model and train teachers on how to make, how to run restorative circles if there is an issue in the class, or not an issue, just wanting to build community and wanting, having a specific target in mind, rather than a responsive classroom circle, which is a, has a specific sequence, or a sort of practice a circle, meaning there is like a specific goal in mind to talk about pointed questions, like specific targeted questions. With parents coming in the building, yeah, it's been frustrating, probably, I can't imagine, definitely frustrating for me. And I definitely feel like I am really only contacting parents about COVID. That's how it feels like. Parents are hearing about, hearing from me only when there's a case in the building or with our weekly newsletter, but there's less parents in the building, obviously. We do have our PTO up and running that meets every month, and so that has been great to have a small contingent of parents who are interested in thinking about what are some outdoor activities we could safely do in the winter or in the spring, and kind of thinking forward in that way. And I have the monthly coffee and conversation with, with parents who want to come at drop off and have a cup of coffee and just chat about whatever, the school or not, and those have some participants as well. So those are what I'm trying, but it's definitely a different look, and it's definitely tiring. I mean, I think last year, we knew that we had these restraints on the school and entering the school, and now I think people are tired of that, those reasonings. But it's still, COVID's still happening. We still have more cases than ever. So yeah, I'm open to any suggestions, of course, but it's been frustrating on a lot of levels. Angela, I don't know if you have similar.
I can echo the same things that we're doing at Grafton as far as second step with our counselor that's available to all students every week. I know that it's especially challenging at Grafton right now. We're down a clinician, so our counselor, along with teaching, she's also taken on the caseload of what would have been our HCRS clinician. But while that is something that we're missing, I think that we're covering that base. I think that my counselor does a nice job with making sure to meet with all of those students, whether it's in a lunch bunch or some sort of breakfast time. And then, what was the other, oh, about parents getting into the building. So we do the same thing at Grafton as far as coffee with the principal, and I have seen that attendance has been growing in that area. More people are coming, and then we are going to host that now at Phelps Barn at the Grafton Inn on Tuesday mornings. Next week will be the first time that we'll go there. It's just a little bit too cold to be outside, and we just have that great space. So they're willing to work with us, and I'm going to bring over the coffee and the pastries, and I have people who have RSVP'd, and so that does elicit some good conversations. And same with our PTG, you know, there's quite a few parents who are involved in that. And then, you know, there's also, we can't underestimate, Liz, too, like all those conversations we have with families at arrival and dismissal. I try to make myself very available in that way. And then I do think that all of our teachers, despite not being able to have families into the building, they post a lot on Class Dojo, and they're available to parents on there all the time through the messaging portion of Class Dojo, and then, you know, we do have our weekly newsletters. So I, but I also share that same frustration of not being able to have families in the building, and even like a nightly event over Zoom just doesn't feel the same, for sure.
Any other questions? Melissa, I don't want to ignore the fact that you're remote, but okay, good. I do have one question. It came from a parent, and you guys may have already answered it for the parent satisfaction because it was a while ago. This had to do with some confusion about test to stay. The parent was concerned that their child being immunized would trigger a response that, like they had COVID with, because they had been vaccinated. And I, I'm wondering if, does there somebody wants to explain why that's not a thing? I told them it wasn't a thing, but I'm not an RN. Just, just I'm wondering if there's any way to be, help people understand there is, that the test to stay is to test for, that the virus is different than the antibody. And I'm wondering if it's possible to respond to that?
So Desi, I'll let you, Desi, I'll let you answer that, but I just wanted to say, so there, there is something worth mentioning with the test to stay and vaccination. So two weeks after our students have received their second vaccine, they will no longer need to test to stay, just like our teachers do who are vaccinated. So if you're identified as a close contact, after that two weeks has gone by, you'll still be notified if you're a close contact, of course, but the child, the children who are vaccinated will not have to test to stay. They will just have to monitor for symptoms for 14 days. If you've had COVID, have you tested positive within the last 90 days for COVID, then you don't qualify for test to stay because you could come up as positive even though you're not, it's just that you have had it within the last 90 days. So that's just a monitor for symptoms basis as well. As far as being vaccinated and coming up positive on a COVID test, I've never heard of that. Desi, I don't know if you want to say something more about that, but.
No, you actually said everything that I would have said perfectly. But no, if you're vaccinated, the antibodies that you get from the vaccine, it's, it's not the same as having an active case of COVID, so it wouldn't show up on the, on the test to stay test. But no, Angela, you said everything exactly perfect as I would.
Why don't you come from you rather than from me, because the obvious question is, who are you? So it's, thank you very much for that. Are there any further questions? Again, thank you all, because I know it's been, we've seen the numbers, and clearly everybody's been very challenged by what's been going on with these constant little outbursts of COVID. And if there are any people that haven't been vaccinated, I just beg you, please, see this out. I know the most recent count at DH, they had 90 beds reserved, and 40 were in the ICU, and 20 were on monitors, and who gets? So let's do that. Moving on from that, all unfinished, and again, thank you both. All unfinished business for discussion. Oh, we, we're going to switch to the, to the item about the.
Why you do?
Yeah, executive session. Thank you, thank you all for filling me in occasionally. It's really helpful. So Ricky, go ahead.
A question about that, just because we've got negotiations update for executive session and a liability issue for executive session.
Yeah, that's what I'm moving up to.
Is there, is there anything, I always like to acknowledge for the, you like to acknowledge for the public, you know, we're anticipating action.
Yeah.
So should we try?
We are not, we are not at this point anticipating action. This is, this is because there are some potential legal issues involved, and, and we're also doing negotiations and the interests of, of the districts and contract matters are always advanced by confidentiality to the public.
So my point would be, are there other things we should do so that, that once we come out of executive session, that's it? I mean, I'm thinking about those who might want to leave.
I don't believe we'll have any, I don't, yeah, I'd be eager to probably. About 45 to 7 type of thing. Yeah.
Can we do both the 5 and 6B after 7?
There we go. That sounds, without objection, that sounds fine. Thank you for tidying up the paperwork, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay, so.
So, so this would be the liability and.
We'll just, we'll go to the budget report and discussion briefly?
Well, I think that, yeah. I think the feeling was that that budget discussion would be advanced by having this item come up now.
The executive session.
An executive session.
Prior to the budget.
There you go.
I see.
Okay, so if we, with everyone's indulgence, unless I hear us, yeah, because if, you know, any person objects, we have to vote on it, so. Good, then I, then let's do that.
Should we tell the public?
I would tell the public that we are going to take a 20-minute timeout for this. So we need executive session, we will resume, and start discussion about the budget report and local budgets, et cetera. But we'll be about 20 minutes offline, and hopefully Fact TV can play some music if they're doing the slide.
We need.
All right, we are, it is 7 o'clock. It was a little longer than we expected, but we are back in public session. We went into executive around 6:35, so there about, so that's 20 minutes, something like that. So here we are, and we are now resuming the conversation under old unfinished business, which is the budget report and discussion. That's subitem 1, which is the local budget in SU draft, and I, we've got a presentation in front of us, and who wants to take this?
Westminster first.
This is Westminster's budget, so I can speak to it. The budget I presented. The budget I presented, I still feel comfortable moving forward. One thing I do want to circle back to, a few minutes meetings ago, we talked about the van. And at that time, I thought that, I had the understanding that it would, the SU was moving in the direction of purchasing vans for SU purposes and that it seemed redundant for Westminster to also have a van. I don't think that is going to happen as fast as I had thought just because of the supply chain. So I would like to hold on to the van until we move in that direction.
So do we need a resolution for, to ask the, weren't we selling the van to the SU?
Yes.
Oh, is that?
What we were doing?
That happened, that actually passed.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
So the van is not, the van, well, you don't have title, but as far as I understand, the van is still, is still with us.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Because I actually had someone query looking for a van and I almost went, oh, I got one for you.
Actually, I have one. Okay. Then never mind.
So we were good there. And all this has actually done is made it consistent with state law that all transportation is supposed to be owned by the SU. So congratulations to everybody who are legal. And, and, but then you still got a van to you.
Right. Because my memory, I guess, was a little different and I thought that I was going to be losing. And I was like, I don't use it every day, all day, obviously, but when we need it is, it is really helpful.
We may have, we may have to put you on the list of bus drivers. So how do you feel? You got your.
Van drivers, I think pretty safe.
Get your commercial license?
Yeah.
What's that saying? Possession is not intentional law, right?
But other than that, I, I have no changes for my proposed budget at this time.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And we do understand that there may need to be a reexamination of some of the support costs. And these numbers, it is my understanding are based, the salaries are based on what? What are they based on the current amount being paid? Are they, is there a, did we ever build in any, any changes? There are, there are no contingencies in here? And there's no, okay. And that, that's something we may want to visit, but I'd rather not do it tonight because that's an SU wide chat, I think.
So, so the salary budgets, the requested FY 23, what you are seeing is the current salaries plus any one, one and a half percent that was in there.
Right. But, and, and the benefit lines to the best of knowledge are the ones that we had as of two weeks ago.
Yeah, these, these, these were updated as of yesterday. I wanted to go back and look at them.
Would they include the 6% health and food?
I, I, that is my understanding that they do.
That's what I've written down.
Yeah, that they do. Yes.
Okay. Well, we, we clearly have a couple items we're going to need to know about. Is it my, my understanding is that we probably not going to be approving budgets this evening for a variety of reasons that we'll be getting into. But this is, sounds like we're at least on track until we have some changed numbers here.
Well, and the, really the only, the most significant numbers that will be changed, changed in this local thing will depend on our outcome of negotiations.
Exactly, exactly. No great shock there. Any, any questions that we haven't asked about this? Sounds like we're good. Angela, you at a point where you want to chat?
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot of questions about a lot of this budget. This is my first go around with this. I wish that there was a class that I could take for however long it would take for me to fully understand this. I would do it at night or on the weekend, or really any time in the world that it was offered. Because all of this is, can be very confusing. There were some things that I had sort of thrown out about our specialists that I don't, I don't know if that's going to be worked out before we have to finalize this, if we're just going to move forward with the same specialist counselor sort of setup that we have now. But I was sort of throwing around the idea of just having each special, like our library and music once a week. And then having our PE and health twice a week as we do now and keeping that the same. And then the only other thing that I was maybe going to want to increase, but at this point I don't think I need to, is our trash. Because we're going to move to a dumpster and not use the trash room as a trash room anymore. And so, but I, but I, it's my understanding at this point from Triple T that it's going to be the same cost, that the cost is not going to go up. So.
If, at some point, you know, you, I, I don't know what level of discomfort you have on this budget prep process. If, if there's any way, you know, us informally or some of our former board members can be helpful to you or current board members, I don't think that's a bad thing. I know David, you wrestle your share of these stuff because nobody hears us at the line. And if there's any way we can be, we don't, you know, want to be very clear. There's a line of authority goes to this guy. But if it's, but if there's any way we can be helpful in this and just kind of walk through, how do, how do these sectors constructed, what are the holes? If that's useful, fine. If not, let us run away and not be involved at all.
Thank you. I, I think, I think some of it is also the, the challenges of getting partial pieces of people. Like Angie has a lot of, you know, like.
Yeah.
We don't have full time staff out here for some of our specials. So how do you utilize what you can get and what you have to make sure the kids are getting what they need?
And you have that whole equity question. It really does have to be every bit as good as what Westminster or, or Saxon River or whatever is in our area. And that's hard to do with fractions. Charlie?
The last time we looked at this budget, we noticed an anomaly in the transport line.
Yeah.
And so clearly there was an oddity about the formula. So I would hope you can track down how widespread is that already? Is it appearing elsewhere? What was the source of it in the first place?
Charlie, one of the reasons that we are putting, you know, for the record, one of the reasons why we, we are kind of reviewing this a little bit more carefully and maybe taking this a little slower than we could normally to be looking for some approvals now is because there've been a number of oddities. And one of the reasons that there is, you know, why, why we're slow walking pieces is is because that's not the only oddity. We've got oddities in a number of spots that we need to, we, we need to clarify. And it's not anybody's, it's not your principles issue. This has been some, some hiccups, either staff, where hiccups at the business office or our old friend, our old friend, E finance is pissed again. It's not probably clear which that is.
In this case, it sounded like there was also a value judgment around how you do the formula. You spoke to different possibilities. So I don't know if this is the time to look at what is the formula and is it the right formula?
I think so. You're talking about the transportation.
Transportation, yes.
Doesn't, the one, the line in the Westminster budget doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
No, I think we're all clear about that. None of the lines in any of the local budgets makes sense. Transportation lines generally, we're, I think we can comfortably say are inaccurate. The question is going to be, can we get a forward magnitude level accuracy to go to the budget? Go to the public with in the right amount of time.
All of the SU assessment items in the Westminster budget are open to question.
Right, right. I, I, I don't think, you meant to say none of the lines.
No, 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 not, none of the lines. But there are, but there are, but there, it's the old, it's the old, it's the old auditor's rule. There's no such thing as one error. And when you find one, you need to, you need to tease it apart and find out what it's connected to. And if there, and do a random sample. And if you're confident in your numbers, it's a small random sample. And if you're uncomfortable with numbers, it tends to get really big really quick.
Well, I understand the general pattern, but in this case, it seems like in addition to there being an error, there might be a policy issue as well. So, which would have to come before the SU presumably to decide, well, how do we want to charge the tax for transport?
Oh, so you're saying that the, that in addition, that policy is based on school population as opposed to finance as opposed to.
You alluded last time to the fact that there are different policy options. And so I wonder, have we looked at what is, what policy option are we using and which is the more.
That's a, that's actually an excellent question. And I just know the answer. I don't know the answer right now.
I'll have to get that answer for you because I, I don't know exactly what formula or policy was used to generate those.
Because there was this whole thing about student mile at one point, which turned into one of these things that penalized schools, didn't have it, would encourage to shorten, shorten up the amount of students, of bus stops and buses that ended up becoming a real problem if you didn't pay attention to it kind of thing.
It also appeared that the formula was based on the number of students enrolled in the elementary school, which ignored the fact that middle school and high school is also travel all the time. So I don't know.
They would have an assessment at their schools and it would be, and they would, it would be part of their tuition statement coming back to SU. And that's how that'd be handled. But, but it's still a legitimate question, which is what is it? Because, I mean, it may not be priority. Want to give it some other stuff going on? But I think it's a great, it's a great question to ask. All right. Angela, anything, anybody got questions for Angela? Okay. And thank you both for, for going through this in what has been a bit more challenging than usual session when it comes to getting our numbers. We are now, we've, so we looked at the draft material. I, I believe that, actually, Andy, you need to, to explain that we're not, that right now we're not planning on, on having a draft budgets on, on DEX. And then we should go on to item two, which is, or I can't remember one and two makes stuff anticipated year end figures. I don't, I didn't do this, so help me out.
When, when we had written this agenda, we thought that the auditors were going to have some year end figures for 2021, 2021. I'm not sure, yeah, proposed this is a little bit further down the agenda, possible uses of projected surplus. And then we were trying to get a handle on where we were this year, just whether we, how we, were we moving along as anticipated. In neither case do we, are we comfortable with being able to say that right now?
Yeah, skipping.
Okay. And we're going to set aside that, that line.
So we can go down to new business, which is the, just the plans for town meeting. And specifically something we voted on in 2020.
Right. And I'm going to let you walk the speed this because I've, I've been under the weather. Everyone knows. And then we just had the early release also.
Correct. That's right.
So, so. So without objection, can we, we will, we will move on to, to the new, to the new seven, I believe it is, so.
So, so while we've been, we've been having a lot of dialogue and a lot of questions with the business office, trying to figure out the accuracy of our rolling estimates of spending and whether all of the encumbrances are showing and such. We also have gone back to look at, well, this is in part because we thought perhaps, and we still don't know, whether there'll be a surplus from the 2021 school year or whether there might be a deficit. We just don't know at this point in time. But the last time we took action to the voters was April of 2020, when at that point we did in fact have a surplus where monies were returned to the public. With the exception of by law, we can ask the voters to set aside monies for certain purposes. So article four of what the voters approved in April of 2020 had to do with applying the sum of $100,000 from fiscal year 2019 surplus to create a tuition reserve fund. We have not needed that and that's not been brought back for any action. However, the next one, article five, Sheldon and North East Union Elementary School District provided a sum of $24,166 from this fiscal year surplus to create a capital reserve fund to be used to deal with building facilities or unanticipated capital expenses and to authorize the board to expand such funds. That was approved.
Right.
And so that's 24,000. That would be, I believe, kind of proportionately divided if needed between Athens, Grafton Building and Westminster based on the, the fortune of revenue, thinking about what Brad James sent to us recently. And I simply am looking at this because I think we might just not be available this budget year. And where are the monies and how do we access?
A couple, I don't know how this has been handled. And you bring up a good point. I know how, I know professionals. Professionals set up a category called the, the capital reserve fund. And you, and you have it, and you have it. And because we were then and are now, a, yeah, we're, we're, we're in, in our, a union district, money would be spent based on need. So this, and should have been spent in that following year. And if it wasn't, we should have had notice of it and, and a, and a request as to either whether to roll it over or to, to return it to the voters. So questions come up. Question one is, was it expended? Is there, is there an audit tract that says this money was spent anywhere?
Because it would have required the board to authorize.
Well, it, it would have required at least notification, wouldn't necessarily. But the point is, we should have, there should have been a report on a regular basis saying, oh, by the way, we got this money and we spent it to fix a driveway over, you know, over wherever or whatever, you know, whatever to spend or we'd like to would be really the best. And I, my memory's got a lot of holes in it recently, but I don't remember us ever doing that. So it's a good question. So there should be in an account somewhere, or at least on paper, this account. So it'd be nice to know if it shows up.
So it's funds from FY 19. Maybe I can get a copy of that, Cheryl, that'll help me. But funds from FY 19 that should have been expended in FY 20. So to the best of your knowledge, you've never been told if, what happened to those funds.
Well, it's actually two parts.
Yeah.
The most significant fund is $100,000 for a reserve fund to help cover tuition of seventh and eighth graders at years when there are lots of seventh and eighth graders. To smooth out those bumps.
Right.
But in that presumably, if everything was, all things being equal, that's $100,000 sitting in a bank account somewhere. And then another 24,000 plus for, as a, as a reserve fund to cover capital.
Now, now these, just so we're all clear, these are funds that would have been in an account and will be in an account held by the Unified Elementary School District for those years. The question is that, the big question we have not addressed, the elephant in the room, is if these things exist, is still big enough? And since we have overestimated in the two year, in the year since this, that we have more kids than we have been in fact turned out to have, you know, $100,000, $100,000. It started as up to, you know, some money and people are going to be interested in, A, how much is it? And B, whether it can be applied to, to the budget? And C, what is the formula based on? Is it your unified district? You, you can't really do it on students, but you sure can do it on towns because every, because even though the district is unified, towns aren't. And every town gets a bill for the amount, you know? You get a million, we get 2 million, Westminster gets 4 million kind of thing. And each one of the, and based on whatever those numbers are, that's how you should properly divide the money up. But we need to know what it is because, one thing, this has come up in, in a select board meeting recently because the question about how much we've been, you know, over charging if in fact we have. And we need to find that out. So that is something, to this, that is something that we probably do need to get rectified by town meeting irrespective of whether we bring budgets because these are places to get charged for this. And our friends in Westminster are mighty irritated with us for repeatedly giving them their numbers late so that they, when they set their own, when they set their own budgets, they're off. Having subsequent scripts of the taxing, tax bills.
Rebuilding.
And and, you know, we're not real popular with with Russ for this stuff. And I'd like to at least do it right once before we.
Yeah, I think you're being a little ambitious, Josh. Because though there is this $100,000 and this other $24,000, and it is is appropriate to find out what that where that is and 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 figure out how to dispose of that between now and July 1, really.
Yeah.
It is unlikely that we will in any time, real soon, be able to have a handle on what the we won't know what the surplus is for this year until at least a year from now.
Yeah, I was just saying.
And we won't know what the what the surplus was for last year until the auditors have finished.
Yeah, we're going to be doing.
So that's going to take it's going to take several years to get through all of this. How do we divvy up the losses or savings?
I just wanted to I figured with the 2019, we kind of have an obligation to get that fixed. And whatever the formula is that we use to work that out. And I think you you go to the state, they're going to tell you to do it by, you know, those town tax bills. Then we go forward. But we 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 ought to at least find out what's happened with this, find out in fact, reserves wherever I be set up. If they weren't, why weren't they? And can they be created retroactively? I don't know. Just it's got to be cleaned up.
And just to add to it again, you know, as to put in a little context, I've been all of us have been looking at our budget reports on a twice a month basis. And at the end of June, around June 30, the last report we actually got was June 21. It looked as if there would be a significant surplus for that year. And looking at that, I knew that there would be some process of going to the voters. Well, time has gone on. We still don't have those numbers. We now know that it'll be quite a bit longer.
And this is probably not real.
But but the point was, I knew that we had, we knew that we had a process of taking this to the voters and wanted to know because potentially the numbers were going to be even more significant. That just led me to try to have us all understand the status of this. This was these numbers were based on audit.
Yes.
When it's completed. There's no question about that. So this is all a part of our learning as we work it out and improve it going forward.
Just I want to just say publicly that you've bird dogged this, and I'm so glad you brought this up because quite candidly, I'd forgotten that we did this. And it's never come up in a discussion. And all this time, some subsequent to it, it should have been part of the regular reporting or at least some sort of note made about it. And if you hadn't, it could have slipped by without comment. And I'm I'm thank you for doing that because, you know, I I I think that's really this is the case example. It proves your point.
We have a little information though, because I did send all of this to Brad James.
Yeah, I totally understood.
Right. So so we're moving along with it. And I think that's all I've got on that topic. David, did you want to say anything more about town meeting or anybody over here about town meeting and preparations?
Um, only that um, we want to in Westminster, we need to try to get candidates. And that, I think, is January 24. They need to be able to have signatures to so that they get on the ballot. And it's probably similar in Athens and Grafton. And then we also will need to, in Westminster, warn warn a budget for next year. What we will not be doing, unlike most town meetings where you give a report of the previous year budget, there is no previous year budget for this year. So we will not be giving a report on that. But we will will hopefully have some kind of a budget that we can that can be warned to the town meeting, even if it's acknowledging that it's unlikely we'll have an idea of what surpluses might or might not have happened and therefore not be able to incorporate those into the budget. But we'll be able to, I hope, have somewhat a good idea of what SU costs are going to be in the course of the town schools.
Now, are you just let me ask you a question because I'm curious about this. Are is it your we weren't assuming that the chance of getting getting school budgets in done and in time for our normal March town meeting looking pretty pretty iffy, to say the least, in fact, it's not going to happen. Are you planning on having doubting for your school offices at that meeting? Or are you thinking that you would want to have that in, say, April when you're approving the budget? Traditionally, you have your budget approval and your your town, your school board officials kind of come in as a package. You've got you've got a certain amount and they're they're enjoying to oversee the expenditure of that.
In Westminster, the the school board members are elected by Australian ballot. And that would that would happen as usual.
So you're beginning.
And then in the budget is usually approved and discussed and approved on the full. And I'm not convinced, I don't I don't what I don't know whether or not we will actually be able. I'm not writing off the the fact that we will or will not be able to have a budget that we can get in a town report if we weren't for much. If it can't be done, so be it. But if it can be.
But you would still go on with the election of of.
We would still go on regardless. We would go on with with the election of the board, of course.
The reason I'm asking is because, you know, the consistency is an important thing. The what the unified districts has FY1, that's to determine A. We do have we're going to have some unfilled. We're going to have some folks that we need to fill positions. For example, anyone that comes in as an interim, that position needs to go before the voters. So change your seat will be brought for the voters on that. Waiting for you to run for it, but then still, you know, that that's the process. I believe there's going to be an opening in Grafton. Can I get a check on that? The other item they you have as a unified district board is you have to change your articles of agreement to reflect the fact that Westminster hopes to know all of the members and to determine what size boards come through. Those we know. I had hoped to have discussions about it over the last couple of weeks, but I know maybe you did. But I wasn't there for them because I was sick. So we need to do that. And the question you will have is, is this stuff you want brought before the voters in March? Do you do that? Or is this part of the April approval that you help them or whatever will be with the budget? And I'm kind of curious as to your thoughts on that. Yeah, now?
So also, the seat that Melissa holds.
Right.
And the seat that Elise holds, both of those terms are complete according to the legal advice we got.
That's correct.
And so Westminster still will have and will need to have seats elected to the Union Elementary School Board for the period from town meeting to July 1.
Well, they'll have it from whenever we, you know, do this. We could theoretically do it in April. If that's that's the question I'm trying to clarify.
Okay.
So we may need to have a special meeting of our of our folks.
The Union Elementary.
Union Elementary.
Because you're still.
Right. Just to clean this up, because I don't think it's something that our our colleagues in Westminster. I'm sure there's not that first.
You still have Westminster's seat.
We have, yes. But I'm just saying the Westminster, the Westminster, the Westminster School District as opposed to the Westminster Representatives.
Got it.
It would be a meeting of our incumbent board to get this stuff tidied up. You know, I've got some stuff scratched out, but I'm just a person. I'm not leading this discussion. Charlie.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry, Glenn.
You were ahead of me. Can I move to a different topic?
Whatever.
I'm should be done. It's like I'm wondering whether enough has been said in the public session to explain the allusions that we've made over and over and over again to the fact that we're not going to be able to produce budgets on time. Within the limits of what can be said.
Okay.
Has it been clearly stated? Because there are folks out there who can say, well, why the heck? What is the answer to that question that can be stated at this point in time?
Well, I think we're our auditors are still trying to finish up their books so that we can give an accurate amount of what may be in excess or in the negative that we go back to each of the different districts. And I want to make sure that we have the most accurate information that we can for the taxpayers.
So a delay in the auditing report that was unexpected.
So delay in the auditing report, I think it would it will if it's not fully acknowledged to say that there's been so staffing dislocations are adding complications to that. And without getting into details about that, that at least not tonight, that there's sufficient that the two factors combined together are are really making the process, impeding the process.
That's a fair statement, yes.
Okay. So if people have more detailed questions about that, your board members are responsible to you, bearing in mind that some of this is personnel and and sensitive. But certainly, you know, our numbers are published. And your call list, I always tell people forever, 828-432-735 for me. Can you follow me and ask? I'm 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 responsible to you. So that's how we have. Thank you, Charlie, bringing that up. All right. So we're on to early release. Oh, I like early release. How come we don't get that? Good behavior.
So we had I proposed last night at the SU board meeting, one, a change in the calendar for this year, which specifically was around February 28, which in the current calendar was scheduled as a student day. And what we found out was that the previous administration had planned and paid for professional development for all of our elementary school teachers. And it was something that we could not get reimbursed on. And so we were going to need to do a split day. But so have our middle school and high school come to school, but not the not our elementary kids. On top of that, the 28th is the day we come back from winter break.
On Monday.
Yeah, on Monday. But then on the very next day, which is March 1st, it's town meeting day. And so the our kids have had so much disruption and I and while, you know, having some fluidity for our students and having them come back as opposed to come back and then go back out is something we felt was not appropriate. What that then does is it moves the last student day from June 16th to June 17th at the end of the calendar.
Yeah.
But then but it doesn't change the number of teacher days because we've just moved a professional development day that happened on June, on that June date. That was voted on by the SU board to to move ahead with. The other proposal that we had brought forward was to utilize the second Wednesday of every month for the remainder of the school year to be an early release day so that our staff can focus on social emotional curriculum for our students. And with very targeted across the SU that we were doing purposeful force that that purpose. It kind of goes into earlier what you were talking about, Cheryl, with what are we doing for our students? I mean, we time is a commodity for us and our staff. To get them to stay after school after they've spent a day, it's very challenging. And we want to partner with the Greater Falls Community Justice Center with restorative practices, but also working with Kerry Newton. And so that we're doing some real purposeful things that is targeted at each building. So we're going to be doing social emotional learning curriculum. But Grafton may need something very different than Westminster needs. And so we will work with each building to make sure we're hitting them for what they need because everyone's had a different place and has different needs. So but what the reason we're bringing it to you guys is that what was discovered last night is that each individual district must vote for.
Correct.
For new early release as opposed to the SU just making that decision.
Right. So it sounds like we need to have motions from both boards and I'm.
I'm not sure. This doesn't have budget implications though, right? So.
No, there are no budget. There are no budget.
I think it is just the Union Elementary.
Okay, so it's the it's the so I understand a motion from the constituent members of the Union Elementary School District to change the change the early release dates to what again?
So it would be the second Wednesday of every month, starting in January and going through May. So it'd be January, February, March, April, May.
And the second Wednesday of each of those.
Second Wednesday of each. And we would publish a new calendar on.
Well, it's a two part motion. The other part of February 28?
That the SU board voted on. And so that I was just trying to explain the whole what we're trying to do.
Now I'm with you.
So I can get it out to as many people as possible.
Okay.
So I need a colleague to make this motion.
Some of.
I heard his name with every word he just said. Let the record show that. Is there any discussion on?
I think all of this is.
What was it? I see.
So in a year that parents have had to pick up a lot, we're going to ask for six additional early release days for parents to figure out, well, the five days from January, February, March, April, May, and then the February 28th day, that would be six.
Well, the February 20th, the February 28th day was already voted on. But that day, we were already going to have elementary students home.
That was going to happen.
Okay, so five additional days, we're going to ask every single family in the district to change their schedule so we can do professional development. That's the question. That's what we're doing. That's what we're voting on.
That is the that is what we are.
Thank you.
So you bring up the I mean, I've there haven't been a lot of complaints because, you know, everybody understands that schools train themselves upside out. But the one consistent point I've heard briefly on various vehicles is all the disruptions that the years have created, all the all the incredible number of disruptions last year created. And is there anything God's name we can do to minimize that going forward? Is this really something we got to need to have to do? I mean, help me out.
Yeah, we really feel that where the students are and where the teachers are in being able to support students as we continue on through the year, there's a need to do an investment in the more social emotional curriculum so that we can respond better to the need to the students. We're doing a lot of reactionary stuff right now and not proactive stuff. We also know that we're going to need, as we even go into next year, we need to be prepared. And so I have consistently heard from our teachers, we need more training. We need to know how to respond to students. I don't have any additional time because all of our professional development days have already been allotted by the prior administration. And we're so what we're doing is we're inserting what we can in the school day. But that's we we can't. We're piecemealing it, to be very honest with you. And one of the reasons why I'm bringing it now is we need to set things up to move forward right now. You know, and wanting to make some plans. If we were to move forward without having targeted early release days where we can, the whole entire SU can focus on it, it's going to be when I can get folks in the building and do things. So it's going to be very sporadic. And so I'm trying to do something that's more universal.
Thank you. I think everybody's going to have a question on this one. Well, I'm going to I'm going to wait. Well, I'm gonna wait for you, if you don't mind, because I'm gonna walk from Ginger around the horn.
I just was wondering, when you add this many early release days to the current calendar, does that affect the number of school days that we already see?
Yeah, no, so an early release day is considered a school day, yeah.
What, what, what time is early release? Oh, I saw this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I will get to you, but I wanted to do this out of the, sorry, I do it all the time. Yes, Lynn?
I was wondering if we could hear from the two principals, their feeling on this, you know, is this helpful for them? Do they see problems with it, or advantages?
I think I see both sides of it, obviously. I may be stuck at a parenting pickle myself on these days, but I also know that restorative practices has had some false starts in the past year, and is not being used to the full of its potential in the SU. And as Andy put it, these targeted thoughtful professional developments throughout the year could establish a foundation that has been needing to be established for the past few years, and we finally have a team that is solid with a clear vision of how we want to support our teachers and then therefore support our students. We've been doing work as a staff during staff meetings on supporting our students in social-emotional learning all year, but this would just give us more time to do that.
Charlie, then, Charles.
I was wondering, is there time, money, staff? Is there anywhere providing childcare for parents who want to take advantage of it free through some of summer all of those times?
There definitely could be, that would be something that we would have to build in, and it would be part of wanting to plan now. I mean, we're, you know, and what would that look like? Because we're talking about double busing, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about who would provide that childcare, how many kids, you know, and so it's definitely something that we brought up yesterday as a possibility, so. And I apologize, Melissa, I should have mentioned that as you were asking your question, so.
I know in previous districts I've worked out, when they have early releases, the after-school program provides childcare the entire afternoon, you know, starting at dismissal through normal dismissal, so I'm not sure if that is something we have time or resources for to provide for our families.
So that would have, would that be, that money we could find, or is that money that we're gonna have to...
We would, we would more than likely look for S R funds to use that, which would be, again, a very appropriate use of those.
Okay. That's at least, I hit swiss, I was going, so Cheryl?
That's the direction I was gonna go also. The first question is, what time is early release? How much earlier than normal?
So it varies at preschool, but...
Eleven forty-five for Westminster.
They're really not at school, they're just gonna be a couple hours and then five hours. It's a town three nominal...
Well, I would, I would suggest that to the extent possible, that this be something that be a possible use for the S R monies, to provide childcare after school, educational opportunity, so to minimize the kind of disruption that Melissa's coming in on. And as you, I mean, it is within the guidelines.
And again, bringing it today, one, the meeting was already scheduled, we found out yesterday, but to plan for this, if we wait until your next meeting, we will not be able to have an early release in January. So we're on to February. So there, for me, there's some urgency in it, but I also understand, if you're looking for us to come back with a plan, I just want to be transparent, that we would be talking about that just starting in February.
Melissa?
Melissa, you ready to hand up again? Yes? All right. I'll, I'll try not to speak about this stuff, because I think it's hard for, already needs to do that. I still kind of hate this, I won't lie, you bring any kids, you know, bringing kids and having them, you know, parking for a couple hours and then firing early release is much of a school day, and then we've got kids that are looking to have you in those school year for all intents and purposes, largely ruined because of all the disruption by, you know, I, I'm hearing the need, but I also know that we have for almost four years talked about, you know, restorative justice and getting this restorative justice program off, and then nobody put it in, and then we had somebody who, let's just say, there were some competency questions about the person that owned the position, and it's not something that we've done terribly well, is it really, is this the time we need to start this process from scratch, or is getting our kids those four, five addition days of actual education more important?
So we are, two things to answer that question. One, the work that Carrie Newton has been doing already at the elementary schools is in the last four months, has been more than we've done in the last four years.
Well, that's kind of hard, that's not a big challenge.
We are seeing very positive results on building community within classrooms right now, I mean, like, immediate results. But the other piece is that it's not just all about restorative practices, it's a social-emotional learning curriculum, so we're moving above restorative practices, so there might be times that we're looking at circles, because this building hasn't gotten that training yet, but we might be doing other types of, you know, looking at different types of curriculum, with the work our folks have been doing with Dave Melnick in a different building, because they're at a different part, but it'll all be a focus of social-emotional learning during that time.
Would you mind reporting in after we've done a following board meeting, just because I kind of like to track this, really, and I just, I'm not voting no, I'm just saying that it, I really want to be convinced that this is really worth the sacrificial sacrifices to...
And again, I will be the first to say, if there is hesitancy, then I'm more than willing to come back with a more articulated plan.
It's just mostly, you know...
Yeah, but in January.
You've got a lot of stuff on your plate right now, to say the least, so I'm not asking you to do that to give us a, you know, a lengthy justification, I'm just saying, just hope us see that this is actually doing something. Any questions?
I just wanted to add, having been a classroom teacher for over twenty years, I know the disruptions, they are so difficult to deal with. You just feel like the kids get in there, get started, and then you're packing them up and send them home, and it doesn't feel like a day that is worth anything.
Yeah.
So I really, I hear what you're saying about disruptions, I think it's really important to think about that. But I don't know how you coordinate it, I mean, would it be better to make it a full day with teachers rather than...
Well, then, we start tripping over there, so, and that's what I feel like, that's, I'm not sure that's necessarily the most intellectually honest approach, don't mean to cast aspersions, but, you know, would it be better just to be out a full day and tack on yet another day kind of thing, as opposed to have kids, you know, come in basically to get cookies and sit with a, you know, with a nanny for the rest of the day, kind of, you know, effectively, saying it the wrong way, but you know, you know where I'm trying to go.
Maybe looking at other, other ways.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think that, yeah, Ginger, I've been in those shoes too, as you know, it's a lot of stop and starts, and you feel like you go in, turn around, and leave. But I think I would probably try to be really thoughtful with the time that we want to use with those kids, and do we want to think, oh, well, this might be an opportunity to have really planned and thoughtful enrichment days for students during those half-days and kind of create them as their own? So it's a different type of learning that will happen on those half-days. I'm not sure, I'm just brainstorming right now, but this is new information.
There's a way that we could get kids engaged for a full day in some other activity somehow.
Right, well, I'm wondering if with this S R fund, if we could partner with other places that could provide childcare on at our sites, but have it be like an engaged, like the Grafton Nature Museum can do an afternoon program in Grafton on that day, or if there's some like the Monchire Museum, do they provide afternoon events they could come to the school and do for the afternoon, so it's an engaging afternoon for students, and not just three hours of extra recess at school supervised by staff, but something a little bit, like, I'd like to put some thought into that, and what resources we have that we could tap into, if we have funds for it, yeah.
Charlie, you hand up, and then I'll...
I hear the reservations, from my understanding point, you have the disruption, but it seems to me this is a time where all factors, all the stars are aligned for this thing to happen. The need isn't as great as it's ever been, the facility to do it has been, has suddenly appeared, competent practitioners have approved, plus we have the S R money to support it, if not now, when? And I think with some creative planning, it doesn't have to be a wasted half-day for the kids. But I wasn't entirely sure, Andy, with what you were talking about, January, if we don't make a decision now, you mean that it can't happen in January, or you'll pull it together before there's a real plan?
So, so I guess, in trying to plan, and as Liz alluded, this is new to her, because I've been listening to principals and teachers for the last three months lamenting about this and trying to figure out how can we bring all this together to provide what teachers and I'm hearing from principals is needed. And so, looking ahead, right, is what I needed to do, and look ahead. We have a meeting next week, and so it was to follow up, you know, and to talk about this, assuming that it was moving forward. Because of individual district boards, I was unaware of that, I thought it could come from the SU, because the individual district boards need to vote on it, I am going to, I would be dependent upon the next time you guys meet, which would be after the new year, which means we're already in the January, there's no way I can plan a meaningful thing for January, that, I don't know if every board will have met by January 12th.
I want to, if you have a question, I'll make it quick, because I'm looking at the time, and I'm seeing the spitting image of my granddaughter jumping on a bed and back in the, back online here, and I know what that mother's going through and don't want her to go through it more than absolutely necessary, so anything else, or, okay, I'm calling the question, because, so, and I'm gonna do a roll call, starting with Melissa, all in favor? No? No from Melissa? Lynn, you're next.
I'm really torn on this, I would love to see it done, but I don't want it to cause havoc with you guys.
Well, would you, in terms, this would be a vote to have these half-days to have presumably some sort of onsite support for kids that are being released, and...
So we would go that route, not sending them home, what happens if you're...
Right, yeah.
Okay, that I agree with.
Okay, so that's a yes. Ginger?
I will say yes, based on what we discussed, if we could provide some other kind of program.
Okay.
An autonomous half-day.
Sorry, this, but I also respect the, respect the majority of my board, and I'm not trying to, I'm not gonna burn this program just because I don't think it, so I just have it two to one.
So you got it, so, because I feel, I feel like the motion's changed a little bit on that, and I know time's limited, so I just wanna, so we're talking about, it's approved as long as we have an option for meaningful students to stay and do something.
There you go. Yeah. We did that right here.
I was actually following it, that's the scary part.
Yeah, okay. You know, I just, all right, I, there we are, that's what we've done. Sorry, Melissa, I, you know, my, my, my heart's with you on this one. All right, date and location of next meeting is the next item, I believe, and when are we meeting again? We're meeting on January, right?
The second and the fourth, is it second and the fourth, Thursday, those are our days?
Yeah, now, Andrew, is that okay with you, or is this, was this the only time with this Thursday thing is a problem?
Or Thursday's good?
No, Thursday's good, I was home today on a sick day, so, yeah.
Yeah, another reason to send you home. I think if you just want to go now, and we'll just, we'll do director's comments and go from there.
So I think the next date is January 13th, it would be the second Thursday in it, because we'll have a long time before we meet again.
And I, I may call you all to spend a little time on getting our stuff for this, the business of the, of our Articles of Agreement, but I'm not gonna push if people have other things to do, but I hope, I may call you all and ask if it can be done for just us. So those are the times, you heard it. Director's comments is up next, starting with Melissa. Silence of silence from Melissa. Charles? Lynn?
Yeah.
I'm good, too.
All right, eight o'clock, we're, everybody go home, and those that are home, take care of yourselves and your family.